Will the Board of Trustees for Pasadena Area Community College please come to order? I would like to ask for Chief Justice Ryan Liu to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Better get the words right, Ryan. Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any recognitions tonight, Dr. Miller?
Well, I would like to first of all, recognize and thank our Associate Student Board members. I know that President Orozco will introduce them later. But also in the audience is our new Dean of Student Life, Rebecca Cobb. And many of you will remember Rebecca has been on this campus before and many folks are very happy she's back, so not the least of which is Dr. Levo, I'm sure. So, welcome. Dean Cobb, thank you.
Great, thank you. Welcome. I think I saw her yesterday, right? Great. Okay, so do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have two.
Okay, so remember, please, we have three minutes and you will be signaled. Thank you.
Gina Harris. Who's the machine?
She's in the back.
Gina Harris, are you here?
She's in the back room.
She's probably in the back room.
I've got to time you on my watch, I'm sorry Gina. You have three minutes.
Catch my breath? I am here to speak about the renting out of college facilities, facilities that are used for classroom instruction recently. I mean, this has been done before, but this time, the television studio, C-125, has been renting out to outside entity. And some resources were used and it, I don't know if they just forgot to turn things off, but anyway, resources were used, they had to be replaced, and it takes away from instruction. Things have been reconfigured and changed and they were not normalized and, or rather, put back to a configuration so that when class starts on Monday, it would be ready to go, whereas this week, it wasn't ready to go and things had to be troubleshoot and it impaired the instruction to happen. So, I just kind of want to, well, I wanted to mention that, to bring that to your attention. And I also wanted to bring up a situation where a group of us were trying to get the television studio that was in the LL Building, and I believe that it was put up to be slated to be used for storage, and we were very, very upset about that. And bless you. And had, we had that, the use of that facility as a studio, that would be a viable resource for renting out, so we wouldn't have to rent out our actual studio that was built for instruction for us to other people, so that when we come in for instruction, it would be ready to go for us for in our class. So, I was informed today that there was a production that the classmate that had planned his production to go a certain way, he couldn't do it because things were changed around and it couldn't be, it wasn't figured out in time, so that they could do the production in which they had planned. We worked really hard in planning our productions.
We have about one more minute.
Okay. And it really is a big letdown when we can't do our productions according to how we plan when it's not of our fault.
That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Do you have anything you need to say about that?
Only that it's not anything that I was aware of, nor do I think our, well, the senior administration, but I'll look into it and we'll find out what happened. We usually do not rent that facility out, so I'm not sure how this time it happened, but we'll look into it.
Thank you, Dr. Miller.
And the other name I have is Melissa Michelson.
Melissa Michelson, are you here?
No, she's not. She was addressing item L.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's item L, sorry. I'll wait till then.
And she wants me to read it on her behalf.
Okay, I'll wait till we get to item L.
Thank you.
No, that's it.
Okay, great. All right. First, I'd like to welcome all of you tonight to our student joint meeting of the Associated Students. This is an opportunity that we get to hear what they have done for the year, and not only that, so that for me, it's important to know the previous report that I heard last year, to see how we did as a college to kind of change that situation. So, let's hear, at this time, I will turn it in the hand of our President, Jordan Orozco.
Thank you, President Brown, and hello, trustees. It's always a wonderful opportunity to speak to you face to face. I'd like to introduce myself. I know you guys already know who I am, but for those of you that don't, my name is Jordan Orozco. I'm the President of the Associated Students of Pasadena City College. This is my second year, or my third year, rather, in Associated Students, but my second year running as President, and you're as your current President right now. So, I'm just going to be giving you a brief presentation on, as the slide says, who we serve and why we serve. A little bit of a student profile. I wanted to do something a little bit different this year. Instead of doing like a nice little showboat presentation of our events that we've done and kind of like show us off, what I wanted to do is give you a brief profile of the students who we serve, because it tends to be a little bit of a distant thing when we talk about students, and we are on the forefront, we are some of those students that you represent. So, today, you'll be hearing from me a couple of statistics and data that I've collected and collaborated with, with multiple organizations around the campus. So, this includes our ASPCC survey, which we just did and compiled. Some of these results you'll be seeing today in this PowerPoint presentation. Some of them are going to be in the form of my board members behind me, which are going to be events they've done to help address some of the student needs. And lastly, it's going to be where we move forward, moving forward from here in Associated Students. As you can see, this is a picture of our last year's board and our current board together at the AS banquet last year, with some faces that have left, who we've missed very much. So, first things first, what kind of students are here at PCC? Well, we're human, just like you guys. We have feelings, thoughts, needs, basic human function needs, like food, water, things like that. Our primary mode of transportation here on campus is car. Most of us get here by some form of automobile or bike, bike as in like a motorcycle. And that was a high, high majority of the students that had responded to our survey, they get here by car. Second thing, how many hours do we spend here a day? Well, majority of our students spend anywhere from three to six hours a day here on campus. That can be from going from classroom to classroom, it could be going from meetings, it could be work, work-study, it could be also doing other things like internships and stuff like that on campus. So, on average, like, I spend more than six hours a day, right? But the average student spends about three to six hours a day. Oh, God, what did I do? What did I do?
You killed it.
Oh, thanks, Irving. I'm going to push a button. So, one of the main reasons students attend PCC is to transfer to a four-year institution. That was the main reason that we got back from our survey of why students attend Pasadena City College. We did get some other interesting facts as well. Some people attend to get a career technical education certificate, some are just attending just to become like lifelong learners, some of them are actually wanting to achieve to get an AA, so that way they can go out and get jobs that don't require a bachelor's or a master's. What do we do besides school? Well, a lot of the times, I know I've mentioned in these board meetings that we're single parents, that students, you know, have work and stuff like that. Mostly, work, that's what we do outside of school. We work anywhere from four to eight hours a day at nine dollars an hour, which is horrible. The cost of living in Pasadena for one month with a single person, a single student, is $12,984, which is kind of expensive. That includes room and board, that includes everything from rent, things like gas, transportation, emergency funds, food, shopping, grocery lists, and it can get pretty much up there. How many days a week are we in campus? Majority of students said two days and four to five days. So, we have students that only come to school twice a week. We have students that are here all week, Monday through Friday, maybe it's Tuesday through Saturday, or four to five days a week. This is where I'm going to start talking about a little bit more of some of the, sort of the cognitive dissident things that we sort of don't really see on the surface level. So, we are a social media generation, meaning 94% of our first-year college students use social media as a way to communicate with either their peers, parents, educators, or anybody that they had come in contact with. So, that's a really big thing, coming from about 10 years ago, when only about 12% used social media, or even if social media was even invented back then. We're seeing a 94% of first-year students that do participate in social media. This is where I'm going to start talking about what our generation consists of. I did, I did a couple of research, I looked at a couple of research firms online, and we're a very active generation. And by that, what I wanted to look for was activism and how we voice our opinions. I looked at this wonderful group called Magid and Associates. Our generation specifically is what you might refer to as millennials, or what we call the civic-minded generation. And that's anywhere, that's people born between 1977 and 20, roughly around 2000. And we're considered civic-minded individuals with a strong sense of community, which is a global community, as well as a local community, more close to home. We're ethical consumers that want to change the world. We look at what we buy. Huh? Okay. Oh, just like I lost my picture, I get it, yeah. That's an average living cost per month in Los Angeles County. Yeah, 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 sorry. Yeah, I don't know why I said, "Sorry." Yeah, wishful thinking, right? Okay, are we good? Are we good? We good tech guys? We good? Awesome. Okay, so, going back to civic-minded individuals, we're living in an age of unprecedented diversity, and we're exposed to a lot of culture, and that's world culture as well as local culture. We are on media and entertainment overload, meaning we're constantly bombarded by social media, as well as entertainment, which includes reality shows, which are crappy, which includes things like the news, Fox News, things like that. We're constantly bombarded with media and entertainment. We are also global citizens. We look at everything from a multi-view of everything. We look at all the pictures from all sides. We experienced the biggest financial crisis since the 1920s, millennials experienced that, a couple of, a couple of years ago. And we are a lot different than Generation Xers, which are people born from 1965 to 1977. They're the least likely to be civic-minded and more individualistic in their thinking. So, we, there is a huge step from Generation X into civic-minded individuals. Going back to the financial crisis, Boomers had a different sort of way of looking at the world in regards to generational gaps. Boomers were able to maintain their employment while millennials were not able to maintain their employment, which is why we saw that spike in unemployment rates in the nation. That's why it went up. The average cost in 1993, or the average student loan debt in 1993 was $9,350, and that is a nationwide average. Can you guess what today's average is?
$60,000.
Nice try. $26,600 is the average student loan debt in 2013. That's a big deal. More students are taking out more financial aid. I'm not even going to call student loans financial aid, I'm going to call it borrowing. They borrowed, on average, $26,600 worth of money just to attend college and their education. So, not only did we face one of the worst financial crises, we also are in debt, which is saying a lot about our generation and the, the way that we pursue our goals and dreams. We see a 538% increase in college tuition in the last 28 years. And 33% would rather, insisted that they would have rather worked instead of getting a college education, and these are all millennial facts, which is a really big deal. Let's go to the positive things. So, the most important things to a millennial, so people in our generation, 52% said that being a good parent was the most important thing that a millennial can look forward to, and that's something that we cherish the most. 30% said having a successful marriage. Do you guys know where having a high-paying career was? Only 15%. The opportunity to communicate with Ipro and a lot of surveying on campus, to make sure we get that data, so that way we're most well-informed. We also do surveys like the Lobby Survey, which, where we get students input on what they want us to advocate for statewide and nationwide. Face-to-face is one of the best ways to get feedback from students, talking to students in classes, getting students when they're out here during the quad, during college hour, talking to students even off-campus on these local restaurants is really, really great. We also include faculty, to make sure that if faculty hear anything, that they communicate it to us, so that way we know what students are feeling in the classroom. We do focus groups, things like hold little retreats, little focus groups, so that way we get students on specific things we really want to know. We do evaluations, so after any event, we make sure that we have evaluations ready, to make sure that our events are running as efficient, as efficient as possible, so that way your students are getting the most out of what we put our money towards. Also, we look at data statewide and self-driven, so like our ASPCC survey, but we also look at things like the college scorecard, to help sort of give us a little bit of a glimpse on what students are facing at the statewide level. So, ASPCC, how do we address these needs? Well, one, we do relaxation/stress-reducing events. One of the most important events that we have is Relaxation Week, where students can come, get free food, get free testing supplies, because the last thing you want to do during finals is run to the bookstore, because you forgot a blue book in your exam, when we can hand them out for free. And we have masseuses come on campus too, which is really great. We do financial awareness events and scholarships. I know Emily, who's our VP for Business Affairs, holds events to give students the opportunity to apply to scholarships that they may not have here, have a chance to apply at PCC. We also do financial awareness events, to make sure that students are spending their money wisely. We advocate statewide, so Hubert is our Vice President for Internal, for External Affairs. He goes to Sacramento, he's actually going to Sacramento in a couple of weeks, to advocate for students and any bills that support students in their education. We do events of campus involvement. I would like to invite my Chief Justice, Ryan Liu, who led us in the pledge of allegiance, to give a little bit more of a brief description on how we get the campus involved.
Hello, everyone. I'll try and keep this short and sweet like myself. Just kidding, that was a bad joke. It's April Fools. So, hello, everyone. I wanted to talk briefly about campus involvement. Yeah. Also, my name, Chief Justice of the Supreme Council, that's also not April Fools joke, that's actually my title for some reason. But I want to talk about campus involvement. Being the son of first-generation immigrants, also a first-generation college student myself, I'm actually really happy of community colleges and their goals, not only to provide a quality education, but also access to education as well. But I think the inherent struggle of having a community campus is that you don't have as much campus involvement of students, and that's completely understandable, when you have a student population that only goes on campus two to five days a week, and have also have family responsibilities, work, and also a host of other responsibilities. So, in terms of what we've tried to accomplish this year on the Associated Students, we've had events also like movie nights, where we've tried to bring together a community. In terms of what I've tried to accomplish this semester and this year, I've planned some involvement, some events, not only involving the campus, but also the community as a whole. I've tried to organize a mayoral candidate forum, where the people running for passing the mayor came on campus to speak about their plans for the city. Also, I ran a civic engagement drive, where many of the people, the local political organizations, came on campus to try and register voters, not only to increase involvement in the campus, but also in the community. And lastly, also, there's going to be an event tomorrow that I'm helping organize. It's going to be a town hall with Assemblyman Mike Gatto in Harborsen Hall. So, I think the principal idea is that not only are we trying to build good students, but we're trying to build civically-minded individuals to take on this 21st century society. So, that'll be my report. Thank you.
Very good.
So, as you can see, we do a lot to make sure that the students are involved, not only in citywide, but also statewide and nationwide voting procedures, as well as making sure that they get to know their assembly members, which is really good. Food is a really great way to address the needs of students. A lot of our students are, you know, doing minimum wage jobs, where they can only afford rent and gas, and sometimes food is an issue. So, having food at our events has been one of our most successful tactics to get students to our events. We do culturally competent events. If you can see in the bottom of our screen, that was our drag show last year, yes, that's main address. We did our drag show last year, which is one of the most successful events that we get our student involvement to. To talk about culturally competent events, I'm going to introduce our Vice President for Cultural Diversity, Irving G. Morales.
Hello, everyone, and good evening. My name is Irving G. Morales, and I, as Jordan said already, I am the Vice President for Cultural Diversity. And two cultural component events that I have thrown this academic year are, one, Mexico Independence Day. This allowed our students to acknowledge a new cultural event that strikes one of our minority groups in campus, and inform students the real date and background of this important I also hosted World AIDS Awareness Day, and AIDS Awareness Day. This addresses our student needs, such as STD and HIV prevention, as well as equipping students with resources to getting tested and receiving the right resources to make themselves knowledgeable in how to have safe sex. In addition, I have also been actively promoting our Student Health Service Center. To close up my speech, I do have three events coming up soon. We have the Drag Show, Veg Fest, and tomorrow, Stand and Deliver. So, I do verbally invite all of you guys to come tomorrow at the Wi-Fi Lounge at 6:00 PM, to enjoy this amazing movie of Stand and Deliver. And yes, we are going to have the director and some cast members coming in. So, and as we said, we love food, so we're going to have tasty food tomorrow. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, you guys. Yum, yum. So, I know they're getting tired. I stand all day, so I'm fine. Okay, lastly, we do sustainable awareness events, events that make sure that students are aware of the sustainable progress our school has made, as well as making sure that students are being as sustainable as possible, not only with their environmental lives, but also with their eating habits as well. So, let me give you a brief timeline of how we go ahead and get our, of basically how ASPCC operates. So, the first thing we do at the bottom, as you can see, is our ASPCC Retreat, which is what we hold in August before the fall semester starts. At this retreat, it's usually held off-campus, because we don't want to get too attached to this lovely little place. We usually hold it somewhere where we can be ourselves and we can open up. It's usually a professional and self-development retreat, where we hone our skills and we make sure that we're here for the students, and we hone our leadership skills, so that way we can apply them towards the fall. We plan our calendar of events come August to September. We make sure that our events are a year planned out, so that way we don't have any snags when the events come, which has proven really helpful when it comes to planning. It's really great, just turning everything all in at once. We survey the needs of students roughly around September, September to December, because we want to be as informed as possible for the spring, which is when we implement most of our events and services. We found that in the spring semester, it tends to be a little bit more hectic, so we plan usually before spring, so that way we can go ahead and implement our events without a hitch. That's usually our timeline on how ASPCC works. Our focus is student involvement. We touch entire areas on campus. We do areas such as the faculty and the Academic Senate. We make sure that we're as informed as possible with whatever they're doing in regards to student success, so that way we can be as informed in making the decisions we need to make. We make sure that we're in touch with administration, so that way we know what's going on at the forefront. We obviously get in contact with students to make sure that we're addressing the student needs. We also do things like help program support. We've funded things like women's basketball. Today, we just funded a wonderful individual to go to one of the national speech and debate competitions nationally. She's one of only two people out of California to go to this event. It is the oldest speech and debate competition, and so we were really, we were really great in funding them. We also help program support with Ujima and things like Puente, who come, who come to us asking for, for help. And we also touch on political awareness, to make sure that students are as politically engaged and active as possible. So, in conclusion, we are an ever-changing group of young thinkers that become the next leaders of tomorrow in an ever-changing world that we adopt to. We seek to develop and foster the growth of individuals by self-empowering them to seek their own goals. We seek to gather all the facts, data, and opinions of students to help our decision-making process, to be as effective as possible for the benefit of students. We do what is right for the students, to help champion the next thinkers of tomorrow, and we are the Associated Students of Pasadena City College. So, that's it for my presentation.
Do we have any questions by, for the, for them, from the justices? Because I know I have one.
Shoot.
So, I have a couple of questions. On the debt, what can, what can be done to help alleviate the debt? What's, so, students are getting more and more in debt, are we giving them sufficient financial counseling? Are we, is there, yeah, besides just giving more money, what else can be done?
More money. No, so, I think that, that specific data was taken off of student loans and how much students are taking out to come to school. I think, I don't know if Hubert and/or Ryan want to speak to this, but I think what obviously needs to be noted is more advocacy for financial, financial aid in regards to statewide, as well as nationwide, federal and state student loans. But I don't think loans should be at the forefront of what students should be asking for. I think we need to do a better job at getting financial aid for students. I know for me, I didn't, I haven't taken, the only thing I've used is a bog fee waiver. I haven't even taken financial aid, so a lot of the things that I've done on campus have been out of my own pocket, and I haven't even taken out a student loan, which I'm really scared to transfer now, because I might have to. But I don't know if you guys have heard anything? What can be done? No, you're just talking to.
Okay, cool. Hello, everybody. So, what I've recently been doing with the Lobby Committee is we've been trying to get, gather information from both the state, the student statewide organization for advocacy, which is the Student Senate for California Community Colleges, as well as getting caught up with, you know, Dr. Ryan Corner, about just what the Board's legislative priorities are. And I'm looking at what PCC views as beneficial and what, you know, we want, which direction we want to move in. And we've recently found a bill that I believe will greatly help students. It is AB 200. It is having to do with competitive Cal grants that usually go to community college students. It's actually going to expand it by, I forget how exact the number is, but I, I think I remember something about 100,000 more competitive Cal grants for students, and it's definitely going to help alleviate some of the, like, the issues that students face in terms of financial, financial aid or being at this college.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yeah, I have a question. Now, that number is, that's not 12,000, that's not students at PCC, is it? Isn't that, is that statewide, is that national, or is that students here on this campus?
What number?
The one you gave on the average student debt.
The 26,000? That was the average student loan debt within the United States.
Well, it's in with the United States, so that includes people who are going to colleges where the fees are $60,000, $60,000 a year.
Yeah, but it was millennial, millennial college students.
Okay, it's millennial college students.
It's the people on our generation that are.
I just, I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't see how it could possibly be that much for students here at PCC. You might want to look and see what happened today, apparently, in the Congress with capping the Pell Grants, and some other very negative, negative things are happening nationally. That might be a good place to focus some of your legislative efforts. Okay? Yes?
Even so, we're not looking at what students are paying here, we're talking about overall. So, when students transfer, I mean, half the people you see here are going to go to places that cost $30,000 or more, and some of us are going to go on to $60,000 or more, so it's, it's completely relevant, I think, the national average.
Okay. I raised the question because he had been talking about the responses to a student survey.
Oh, okay.
And so, it wasn't clear to me exactly when we transitioned out the responses to the student survey here at PCC, and he started looking at, at national data. That, that was my only point. I'm not saying our students aren't going to go, you know, have higher expenses. Okay? Bill Thompson?
This is a perfect segue into the pitch I was going to make later on, to remind all of you that on May 16th, at Pasadena City College, we have a student celebration gala where the where the objective, the goal is to raise money for scholarships for students at Pasadena City College. So if you have not yet purchased a ticket or made a contribution, now is the perfect time to do so, and Bobby Abram, who is in the audience here, will be delighted to talk to you and take your money.
So, you had a question?
Yes, just one quick comment. I think the importance of that figure, not only nationally, but when we keep in mind that our students will most likely be transferring, how do we instill the education necessary, the financial awareness in our student population before they transfer, so they don't take out these loans that may have a negative impact on the financial future? So I think when we're looking at the $12,000, what we have to keep in mind is how are we going to increase? And we've had great some financial awareness events on campus, and also the great work in handling scholarships to students on campus before they transfer. How do we make sure that these students don't end up with this figure over their heads? And how do we give them the necessary means in order to survive once they transfer?
Great. Go ahead, Tony.
I believe, I wish we could be more like Germany in the sense of, I think we should be paying for, paying students. I really would like to see, maybe some of you should get involved in politics, someday where our students can go to school full-time instead of working. Because I teach at a university, and these kids work and work, and they take courses, but they don't have the time. And I wish we could get into that, but I wanted to ask you, in your survey, being one who teaches statistics, how many students did you survey, I think?
It was around, I believe it was.
Was it 800?
No. It was about 1,200 that responded to my survey. Which is actually pretty good for PCC.
That's a good sample. Thank you.
So that was actually going to be my question. So of those 1,200 students that you surveyed, how many of them are full-time students? That really was my thing, because like Tony said, students get, you know, they're working and their priorities are shifted, and it's very hard to do both. So I think last year, we talked about trying to get students to dedicate full-time, provide them whatever it is that they need, the scholarship, and get them in and get them out. It's very difficult, so that's, that was going to be my question. So do you know?
Well, it's on there, but we didn't actually disaggregate that and put it out to bring it to you, but I think our next step anyway is to, you know, take all the data, put it in something that's, that's readable without looking at it step by step and posting it all, so everyone can see it. But sort of hitting on your full-time, part-time question, one of the things that we found interesting was that full-time students, and most of the students are expecting to transfer to a four-year university, they're not taking summer courses or intercessions, as we'd say, which was, you know, kind of strange. But, yeah, there's a lot of data like that, but we can disaggregate it and, and post it so everyone can read it.
It's, the reason, the reason why Marshall, me and Marshall are the ones that designed the survey, and we got some feedback in regards to how to tailor the questions, so that way we can get the, so that way we can get the best results as possible. We, we haven't sat down and we haven't, like, figured out the data, because there's, like, open-ended questions that we asked, and there's, like, 150 pages of open-ended answers that I have not even started to, right? So, and like, Ruben wants some from the facilities, and I'm like, you best be prepared to read, like, 45 pages.
People write paragraphs.
How people feel, like, you know? So I think we need to sit down and look at that, but that was an interesting result that we got. Most full-time students that take fall and spring classes have a 12-unit or more load. They work during intercessions, and that was where the data came from. So most of our students, even if they are part-time or full-time, they're working either 12, either 12, 12 days, or 12 months a year, or they're working during intercession, so that way they can afford to go to school in spring or fall.
Anyone, any other question? You go ahead, after Sal.
Yes, now that other people have introduced the subject of data.
Uh-oh.
I've got three questions, one for the students, but before that. I would find it interesting to know what percent, or excuse me, what the average time at PCC, average time the students tend at PCC, who ends up transferring for a four-year college? I don't know if we've got that, you know? For a student that goes to PCC and ends up transferring to a four-year college, to the extent we know this, on average, how long do they spend at PCC before transferring?
Well, we wouldn't have that in our survey, because if they.
I'm not asking about the student survey. Okay?
Just, sorry.
And the other is, the, the other question is, for any given year, and if we go back six years or something like that, of the students that enrolled, say, six years ago, what percentage of them have, since enrolling at PCC, transferred to a four-year college?
All of that information is available on the scorecard, if you would look at it, from the Chancellor's office. It has exactly, start back six years, look at the following through, and I don't think it's anything that these students can be expected to.
I'm not asking them. I'm not asking them.
I have some questions.
Yeah, I'm asking for the, for the source. And, yeah, I've looked at the, the scorecard. I'm not sure it's exactly what I was describing, and I don't know if it takes all the students who enroll. But the question for the students, the third question, and the one for the students, how many people responded to the survey?
Around 1,200.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Who else?
So, one is just a comment. So you know that the Chancellor, the Board of Governors, has the workforce development, and so one of the things that we're looking at is sort of this balance of how the students get workforce experience and go to school. So, you know, I, and I, so it was going to be one of the follow-up questions, what's your outlook? How do you expect to accomplish, you know, what do you think the outlook, the future is for you to, again, still, but the other question I wanted to ask, that you brought up, when you talked about the millennials being very civic-minded, and yet we see data that shows what low voter turnouts we have, especially among the young people. So, you know, we all ask ourselves, you know, how do we encourage better participation, more participation in civic interest? So what do you think about that?
Well, I think, I think, I think first, so I think there, yeah, I think you're going to see that, because there's a huge political shift in regards to what people thought of politics 10 years ago versus what they think of politics now. I mean, what you see on TV now is not necessarily who's running and how they're best qualified, it's how they can look good on TV. And so I think for us, being an age where we look for media and entertainment overload, I think for us, it's, even for us, it's hard to get students civically engaged in our own elections, let alone, you know, the statewide and national elections. I think the first thing you have to do is, you have to tailor relatable, you have to tailor relatable information to the relatable, to a relatable source. So if you're tailoring to a younger audience, how do you do that? And I think the first thing you need to do is, you need to find out how these millennials think, what are they doing while they're on social media platforms, where everything is immediate. Things are happening immediately. They don't want to go out to voting polls, they don't want to go out and drive, and they don't want to do that. They want to do things from their home, they want to do things immediately. And so I think that, I think there needs to be more research done. I think right now, we're just literally hitting, like, the forefront of how we can address these sort of immediate needs in regards to political views. I think what I was referring to most is like, is like activism, and as to how we voice our own opinions and what we voice our own opinions on. I think we voice our opinions and we tailor it to what's right and what we feel, how we can better humanity as a whole, versus how we can work individualistically, which is, I think, what I said Generation X is sort of do. Hubert?
Oh, and adding on to the idea of activism, I believe I read somewhere on the internet that it was, like, the internet. So I read on the internet that when the older generations usually don't like something or they're not pleased with how things are going, they vote. But when the younger people, like the millennials, are unsatisfied, we like to protest. So a lot of the times, we kind of, I guess you could say, misplace priorities, but the idea behind it is that, in this kind of social media generation, we like to get the word out, and I think it's really necessary to have programs or kind of events necessary for students to understand where their intentions are best applied, as opposed to just letting them run amok and, you know, organizing to, you know, protest their feelings. I think there needs to be a more cohesive strategy for advocacy on both our end, as well as, you know, in the community. But what we can do is just how we're approaching it as a college. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got two more. I have, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll let you speak, then we're going to have the advisory, and then him, and then that's it, we'll move to the next section.
Yeah, just a quick thing. Having organized the events that were focused on making students more civically engaged, I understand how completely difficult it can be. Part of me wants to say, the only way you're going to get people to vote is offering them free food, but obviously that's not realistic. So our mayoral candidate form, I was expecting maybe 50 people, but at one point, we had around 180 people, including volunteers. What I found was helpful, and after entering DC, I saw that people who were interested in politics had a particular issue or set of issues that they were passionate about. And I think almost every person you'll see, they do have a set of issues they are passionate about, whether it be sustainability, education access. It's just trying to find that connect between their emotions and making it convenient for them to go to the ballot box. So I think that is something we need to do. We need to educate people on how the voting procedure works, because I think a lot of it is that people are so busy with other aspects, they don't, they don't try in half the time to go search up how the electoral process works, how to register to vote, where to go to vote. So we try and make it as simple as possible by increasing access to this information.
And just to make a quick point, his events are some of the most well-attended events that we've ever had, which is sort of like opposite of the data that's showing that we're not as, we're not going to the voting box, but yet students are interested in making sure that they're heard. So I think that's, you know, I think that says something.
Justy Lewis?
Okay, so I was going to say, something along the lines that Hubert said is millennials react in a different way, whereas older folks tend to go vote, younger folks tend to get online, make a petition, start a Facebook page, or comment on things, and spread it to their friends, and they try and change people's minds through that, that view. And what I think it comes down to is their involvement and their feeling of power. And I think it has a lot to do with millennials not being in elected positions. They don't feel like they have a power because they're not elected, and they think they're voting for people who aren't relevant to them or don't see things the same way as them, so they don't show up to vote. I hope that's what it is, because if not, we're in trouble.
Okay, so you had something to say?
Yeah, just a couple of very quick things. First of all, on our campus, trustee Salvage, about 38% of our students are full-time. That's in average. About 38% of our students are full-time versus part-time. So 60% of our students now are part-time students. The other thing is, nationally, the statistics for completion community colleges is about six years, and that's something that everybody's working on to try to, try to improve that, get it back to the two-to-four-year range, depending on the courses that students are taking.
But that, but that's not the transfers, that's people that get an AA degree and then.
Right, that's basically completers and moving, and moving on to either transfers or, or terminal degrees, ASs, ASs, and certificates.
Yeah, what I was particularly interested in is the ones that, after leaving PCC, then start in four-year.
Right, I understand. I was just kind of giving you the, the broad. And then the other thing I just wanted to say very quickly, in terms of millennials and participation, we've got, on campus, we've had signature gatherers for the new, for the $2 billion Facilities Bond Initiative. So get out the vote, Ryan and company, to go sign up for those signatures, we can get that on the ballot. And finally, I really would like to say thank you to President Orozco and his board. It's been a very positive year, it's been a very helpful year, as we've worked through some of our campus culture and, and other challenges and opportunities. And I want to thank the AS leadership, and certainly trustee Lewis as well, for the very, very positive experience that we've all had this year. And we thank you, and I know some of you are going to come back, and I know Jordan's on his way to bigger and better, but we thank you, sir, very, very much, and thank all the board members.
So, the second part?
Yeah, so me and, me and trustee, President Brown met, and we wanted to, one of the bigger things that she wanted to hear are the updates on last year's concerns in regards to some of the things that we brought up. I would like to first thank Facilities Director Ruben Smith for reaching out to me to address some of these needs beforehand, this meeting, so that way I can update you on what's going on. And then we're also going to go ahead and talk about college climate, as well as how the Board interacts with the Associated Students. So I guess I'll just get into the first one. So one of the things that we had found last year and heard from students was that the cleanliness in the classroom was a big issue, and a lot of these classes, especially in C buildings and R buildings, were kind of, were unkempt, were unclean, and they kind of needed to be renovated and updated. And one of the things that we also heard from the survey that we did, one of the open-ended questions, was the cleanliness of the bathrooms on campus. And I'm not talking about the new renovated ones, because those are very nice, but just some of the ones that are, that need a little bit more of an upgrade. And Ruben had said that they are moving forward with some plans to renovate some of the restrooms, so that way they get updated as current as possible. They're, they're obviously opening up a family restroom in the R building, I believe. There's two, there's one, there's one on this side, and then they're also, they're opening one, I think it's on the second floor, or one of the other floors as well. And then they also converted the Aquatic Center, those restrooms, into a family restroom for people that need, they have a special needs individual who needs an assistant to help them, they can go in that restroom and help them as well. And then also, they're working on multiple door hangers to add, because that was one of the concerns that we had, when you go to the bathroom, there's nowhere to put your stuff except on the floor, and a lot of people don't want to put their stuff on the floor, you know? So they're, they're working on putting multiple door hangers and multiple things to address these needs in regards to facilities. The classrooms, I haven't heard anything this year. I've been in a couple of C building classrooms this year, and they've looked pretty, pretty clean, pretty spot-on, and, and pretty updated, I would say. Does anybody else have anything to add to facilities, anything that they've seen? They're a quiet bunch. Yeah, so I, I think the facilities are, to address those have been really, facilities are doing a really great job, so. Yay, yay, Ruben. The second thing we wanted to talk about was the update on the college climate. I know last year, there were some things, and one of the quotes that President Brown brought up was, when the, when the parents argue, the kids feel it too. And I hate referring us to kids, but it was the only analogy that came to my head at the time. So I would say, I would say it's gotten better and gotten worse. So I think better in a sense of, we've done a lot to make sure, I did a lot last year to make sure that ties that had been broken in AS the year before could be mended, and made sure that my Board last year had all the resources it needed to be as successful as possible. I also made sure that last year's Board set up this year's Board to be as successful as possible. And like Dr. Miller had said earlier, this year's been really positive in Associated Students. We've had some hiccups with some people, but I think overall, I think we've done some pretty successful work. I know each of these individuals have done, you know, numerous things that I've been proud of and am proud to share with you guys this, today, I think, what we've done. I think one of the things that, that needs to be addressed specifically is the way that student, is the power dynamics in which faculty, staff, and administration, as well as classified, address students on campus. And I think this is really important. I don't want to get into it, but this year, we had an incident where it got too ahead, and a couple of us on the Board were addressed in a very inappropriate manner in one of the hallways. We addressed it in a way that we felt was best and as professional as possible, but I feel like this is a very important thing, because from educators to educatees or to students, there's a code of ethics professionally that we all need to abide by. I don't hold these people to a different level than I hold administrators, or classified, or faculty members. I hold them to the same standards. And the way that I was addressed, and if it's okay, trustee Lewis and one of my VPs was addressed, was not in a professional manner, and was not in one that I would ever address faculty member, staff member, or Board of Trustees member. And so I think it's really important to bring this point up, because when we want to start talking about collegially collaborating and working together towards a better, more sustainable and great climate, we want to all work together, and I think we've taken some steps to make sure that we work in a very collegial manner, and to make sure that my Board feels safe and feels supported in an environment where they can get the best out of their education. Is there any questions? Okay.
I would, I would just like to make a point as a follow-up on that. I think that's really an important point, particularly the way that students are addressed by faculty, staff, and Board members. I'm not aware of Board members not being professional or polite with students, but if it happens, I hope it will be brought to the attention of the Board President. And I would hope in the future that, that the, that we could all model that kind of behavior, maybe at Board meetings. I mean, we have set through some pretty implied, I would say, things that we have heard and seen, and I think if we could all, you know, try to model this, I think it's particularly important that students be treated, you know, with respect at, at all times. So I'm very, I wasn't aware of this, I'm very upset to hear that there was such an incident.
Yeah, and thank you for that, trustee man. Like I said, me and trustee Lewis are doing all that we can to make sure that, we work in a very collegial and professional manner to make sure that the students feel safe and secure in this environment, because this campus is a great campus. We, I've had nothing but, you know, positive experiences educational-wise in regards to We, I've had nothing but, you know, positive experiences educational-wise in regards to my professors, my faculty, but it's really important that people that follow me have the same experiences, not, well, not the same experience, but have really good, positive, and self-promoting and self-growth experiences that I have had in this. And I've taken nothing but good things away from, from being in AS, and from being an elected official. It's been, it's been really great. Last thing was, we wanted to talk about board interactions with associate students. So this was something that sort of has been talked about the past couple of years that I've been in AS, but it would be really nice if maybe at least once or twice a year, some of the board members would come and sit in one of our meetings, one of our associate student meetings. I tend to think that we model a pretty good model for Brown Act and Parley Pro, because we follow that strictly to the T. And so when we have guests, we make sure that everyone's welcome, and we make sure that, if there's public comment or anything, that you go ahead and get your say. And I know the way that I ran my meetings this year, if you had something to say during an item, I would definitely call on you if you were in the audience or anything, because I feel like it's really important that I'm not only getting the feedback from us, but if there's people from around us that have something to say, it's really important to get, you know, feedback from everybody else. But I think that's something that you guys should look into, especially going into next year, with new board and with new people, is maybe visiting them and making sure that there's some, there's visibility and there's some face to the name, because it gives us a nice little picture of who's who, and who can we talk to, and who also supports us. I think that's really big as well. So...
Great. So any other questions from the board? No? So, I just want to thank you guys, you guys did an extraordinary job. You, throughout the year, you did well, you behaved well, you act accordingly, and, you know, you have a promising future ahead of you. I just want you to know that, all of you. So if you guys could continue to exemplify what you're doing, you'd be our next future leaders, maybe you'll be up here running the ship. So thank you very much, and now we will go to the other part of our meeting.
Thank you, board trustees, thank you for having us.
So, the next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from March 18 and March 21st. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second?
Motion by trustee Wa, and second by Dr. Fellow. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, no, we have no discussion, no deletions, no amendments, so it all goes unanimously. Okay, so now we will turn to our consent items. Do we have any item we wish to approve a second, for a vote separately?
Yes.
Yes, trustee Thompson?
Number 184 and 185B.
Okay, so let's approve the other slate, if there are no other ones.
Move to approve.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Wa, and a second by Dr. Fellow. Advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so motion to approve all except for the two that trustee Thompson would like to discuss, okay? Which ones are the ones?
184, 185.
184, let's start with 184.
I just want to have a little bit of presentation from staff as to what these two items are, because they are both agreements with Pasadena Unified School District, and I'd like to know and have all of us know, and the audience, and people watching on television know more about what we're doing with, with PUSD.
Thank you.
So, unfortunately Dean Davila, well, fortunately Dean Davila is not with us this week, he's got, his son has spring break, so he is enjoying that with his son. So I can briefly speak to these, and then if anybody else can add a little something that's needed, that would be fine, but specifically, the California Career Partner Trust funding was granted to our institution, we're the lead fiscal agent on a roughly $15 million grant. As you go through these, these are two agreements which provide funding for the, what they call the LA High Tech, which is information and communications technology. And these are to fund and support different career pathways with the digital media and business and fine arts academies, I believe, over at PUSD. The PUSD is one of roughly, let's see, four or five major school districts, eight community colleges that are participating in this career pathways trust funding from the state of California. And we could certainly have trustee Thompson more specific presentations on this at a later date.
That would be fine, I'd like to have that, I'm not gonna hold them up this evening, I just wanted the, all of us to know a bit more about what they involve.
Very good, well then we'll, with trustee Brown's approval, we'll go ahead and get the agendas.
Go ahead, I'm just...
This is essentially the same sort of thing with El Monte, correct?
Yes.
I mean, that was my understanding.
Sort of the same, it's a different program though.
Right, it's a different program.
Same kind of arrangement.
Well, well, if you're talking about Rosemead and the, the Rosemead Center, is that what you're talking about?
No, no, no.
No, item 183B.
Yes, in that, in that respect, yes it is.
Okay, so, are we ready to vote then, 184? Is it 184 and 185?
Yes.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Thompson, and a second by trustee Salvage. Okay, so, trustee Lewis?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carry unanimously, thank you. So what we're gonna do at this point, if it's okay with the board, I will ask that we move, go out of sequence, and move the School of Science and Mathematics Program Presentation to the next, so they can go home and study.
So I'll ask Dean Douglas, the school dean, to come to the podium and make an introduction of our students and, and some of the great things that are happening in the School of Science and Mathematics.
Thank you, President Miller and President Brown. The School of Science and Math is a big entity, we've got about 100 full-time faculty, a couple hundred part-time faculty, and there's a lot of wheels that turn within this school. And so what I wanted to do tonight was present to you a little snippet of one of these wheels, and it's a very important one, it's chemistry. Chemistry is one of the founding sciences for most of the STEM disciplines, essentially all STEM, nearly all STEM students have to go through chemistry, so chemistry's been a really critical part. It's also a very large organization, and I couldn't manage this school without the help of faculty leadership. And so the person I'd like to introduce to you now is my chemistry faculty coordinator, Dr. Veronica Jaramillo, and just gonna tell you a little bit about what's going on.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to come and share our story. I've brought four members that are board members for our chemistry club, and they traveled last week to the National American Chemical Society Conference with me to share their story of their club activities. So they've brought their poster, and they're gonna describe what our club does, and what all the things that they're involved with.
Hi, I'm Patrick Johnabedian, I'm co-president of the chemistry club, and, you know, we aim to make a big impact on campus. One of our main affiliate, oh, we're an affiliate of the American Chemical Society, which is on that poster. We recently made a trip to Denver for the national conference, and I had a lot of networking opportunities, and were able to sit in a lot of high-level lectures from a lot of PhD researchers. And among our roles on campus and in the community, we're involved in a lot of community service with outreach to elementary schools, and we're involved with green chemistry, promoting sustainable practice of experimentation with chemicals. And we actually received some awards at that conference in Denver for the, the Green Chemistry Award, and also the Outstanding Achievement Award for our overall involvement. And we were one of 30 schools out of over 400, and most of this, most of the schools were universities, we were among the few junior colleges. So we, you know, I think we stand out among, you know, the nation, pretty much. And each of us are gonna come up here and share a few things about what we do. Personally, what the club's done for me is, it's given me direction, and really, when I came to the school, I wasn't exactly sure what I wanted to do, and joining the chemistry club gave me an opportunity to see, like, what, what, what an industry, what working in industry could do for my career, and I ended up working in the pharmaceutical industry because of being in the chemistry club. And then joining the board gave me the management experience that will hopefully help me in my career going forward. So that's, that's my personal testament to what the club can bring to, to campus. Here's Mackenzie Do, detail more things we have.
Hi, so I'm Mackenzie Anderson, I'm a chemistry major. So as Patrick was saying, we received the outstanding award for ACS, and each year, as an ACS affiliate, we have to compile a report that includes all the activities that we do, and it's peer-reviewed by a committee of ACS, and that's how they divvy out the awards at their national meeting. So one of the things we're really proud of that we put in that report each year is our outreach. So currently, we do outreach activities at two local elementary schools, Jefferson Elementary School, and Norma Coombs, at which we visit two fifth-grade classrooms at Jefferson, and one fifth-grade classroom at Norma Coombs, where we facilitate once a month at both schools sort of chemistry lessons and hands-on experiments. So we get a group of volunteers together, we put together a curriculum, each time there's a different topic in chemistry covered, and we provide experiments for the kids to do, as well as instruction from students in their community attending Pasadena Community College at these, at these Pasadena schools. So we work to not only complement their curriculum, to hopefully give these schools better performance, better scores in chemistry and mathematics, but also to kind of inspire them, and give them the experience that they need to have them pursue chemistry, and feel like that in, we being community college students, that they too can achieve, have achievements in the sciences. So as the outreach coordinator, having the opportunity to be in the chemistry club, I, coming to PCC, it was, they, we, which Jennifer's gonna talk about in a second, I had the opportunity to get involved with research and get to know my professors, leading me to become a part of the board, and have, being a student wanting to pursue a career in academic research, and then eventually teach, getting to work as, with these outreach programs at these schools, has been really formative in how I look at my education. So having the chemistry club, and getting to be a part of the ACS Southern California Student Chapter, and be a part of these larger ACS events, and network with this larger community, I feel like it's complemented what I experienced in the classroom, and really inspires me to continue to pursue the sciences, having this whole other, whole other view to look at things from. So I'm gonna give it over to Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Portillo, and I'm a VP from the chemistry club, my major is biochemistry. And one of the things that the chemistry does in partnership with E-Stamp, I'm part of the ECure, so we do internships, and some of those internship is with, actually Dr. Jaramillo leads it, and we have partnered up with Caltech. And in that internship, what we do is that we're just working with different metal oxides and trying to find the next potential catalyst that could split water and use it as a fuel. And another one is synthesis of sustainable paint, so that's kind of also promoting green chemistry, since a lot of the paints actually have a lot of harmful chemicals. So we're trying to use natural sources, kind of like blueberries, bear keratin, try to extract pigments, and, you know, more green chemistry. And now we're actually in the process of writing a paper, so it's, it's very, it's a, it's a great experience. And other students are actually also working with nanotechnology, and that's also kind of going hand-in-hand within outreach. And this, being part of chemistry club has done a lot for me personally, starting with the communication that I have with the faculty at Science Village, I've been mentored very greatly, they've really opened doors with, for me, actually. Dr. Jaramillo has been very great for me, always pushing me to apply for internships, kind of guide me where I want to go with this, and I think it's very important also to take it to other students, starting at a young age, because I personally didn't have any guidance in science, knowing that that's something that I really want to pursue. So going to the outreach, and taking that to the young kids is very important, and that's something that we really emphasize as a chemistry club, that taking science to a young student and giving them a hands-on experience at a young age could possibly pursue, make them pursue this career, knowing that it's, it's very difficult, you know, we, we need that mentorship. And going to Denver, it also opened doors on how to network, you know, network is very important going into the science field. And we actually got to talk to one of the, he's in charge of international internship, he gave us tips, so he even opened those doors with that, gave us the experience in Denver of what other people are working on, and possibly one of us continue that path. So, I mean, there's a lot to say about what it has brought to me, but this are some of the main topics that I would really want to, you know, emphasize. So I would like to continue with another board member.
Hi, my name is Kevin, and, sorry, as the co-president of the club, I'm very pleased to say that I'm really enjoying to become the president and also organize events for students in the PCC. And also, as actually, in this club, I've actually done a lot of things that are new for me, growing up in Hong Kong, born and raised in Hong Kong, I was, I guess I was kind of timid, and kind of shy, kind of introverted person, but then doing all these things that I have to talk to amongst students, among professors, I need to go to national meeting, and talk to people I've never known, as strangers, and just make me step out of my comfort zone, and just really, trained me for, for public speaking, and also just talk to people about what I'm interested in, what I'm pursuing. Right now I'm pursuing, pursuing in a medical school, and then just striving to become a medical research doctor, and as, thank, as for the ACS Denver meeting, I've learned so much about research, and I've learned so much about how to network with people, and how to write scientifically, communicate with people. And as chemistry club, and we promote students' interaction in, in the science department, and also through our non-science major as well, and we also strive to introduce careers in, in chemistry, and ultimately, we just want to provide a niche for them to, to interact and have some fun in chemistry. So one, some of the events we do is on, in October, there, it was the National Chemistry Week, and this year, the topic is the chemistry of candy. We did a candy workshop on a Saturday, and we just invited students to come over and just make candy together, so we, not only do we understand how to make candy, and how chemistry is related to making candy, but we also enjoy a sweet treat. And also, we also have magic show, we have scientists that, come up with scientists that we call it as magic, but it's not really magic, we just, we're just performing experiments that can blow all students' minds, and just, and just really, really cool lights, you, unfortunately I can't really show the pictures, but it's there, like, there's magnesium light in two blocks of dry ice, and creates a really bright color in the dark at night, and just really cool stuff that we're doing, just to show, showcase the chemistry we're learning, and also having some fun. And also, we did the mole hunt, which we, on the, on the mole day, we, we hit moles in the Science Village, and students are supposed to find them, unfortunately it didn't turn out that great, but they didn't find it, we, I guess we hit it too well, but, yeah, that was fun. And then also, each month, we had speaker series, speakers from academia, and also the industry come and talk to students about what they're researching, and what, how teaching is, and, and just, hopefully they will get an understanding of what, what working in the industry, and also the academia would, would sound like. Also, current, currently, we're, we're working on some project like the Green Chemistry, LG Extract Project, we're striving to teach students about some organic chemistry techniques, and also to promote green chemistry. Also, we're doing resume review and mock interview, which we are collaborating with the Career Center, and just to help students who are maybe applying for jobs, or maybe have their, need some help with resume writing, or just mock interview for med schools, for pharmacy schools, and all that stuff. And also, last but not least, we're having an inter-school scale-like chemistry bowl. We had that event last year, it's kind of like the Super Bowl, it's got to get us exciting about chemistry, it's like competition, like we're doing experiments to see who gets the most accurate results, and also, we have different questions that, like a quiz bowl at the end, so like, different school can participate and just answer those questions. So, with that said, that concludes our presentation. Thank you.
So I just wanted to mention that we left this with you, so you can further, we want to extend our chemistry to you, and we hope that you extend it, read it, and extend it to maybe some children in your community.
Anyone have some comments before you go? Go ahead.
This is extremely impressive, and it's, as a person who works in a world of intellectual property, and know a little bit about chemistry and biochemistry and things of that nature, you're really on a great path, and I think you are extremely benefited by having had this type of experience, and so I just want to congratulate you for that. Also want to thank Dean Douglas... Also, I want to thank Dean Douglas and others for coming and telling us about it, because it's good to know things like that that are so positive and have not only us, but the audience and the thousands of people watching us on television, no doubt likewise, know what we're doing here, so thank you.
Any other person? Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Hermio and others for the incredible work that you're doing, and ask Dean Douglas to do a quick plug on Girl Science Day that's coming up, or returning to Girl Science Day for middle school in a couple of weeks, I think.
Sure, I wanted to clarify one thing, they aren't real moles that we released.
Yeah.
Just, just make that clear.
Ruben was taking some notes back there, but don't worry.
Yeah, Girl Science Day is coming up April 11th, and that's a joint PCC, PUSD event.
Oh, that's great.
It's largely going to be focused around careers in science this year, as well as some hands-on activities, but a little different than what we've done the traditional Girl Science.
Middle school, so this is great. So thanks, everybody, this is great, and the future is bright with you guys out there.
So before you leave, I want to thank you, and you guys seem to be enjoying what you're doing. You are learning, but you're having fun, and that's what education should be about. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
While the next week's coming up, if you don't mind, I want to quickly return to Mr. Thompson's question before, because I now understand what he was getting at. The PUSD is going to be getting over 1 point, almost $1.7 million of funding over the next four years through our Career High Tech Grant. This year, in relation to the pathways that support the high-tech impact information technology, entertainment, and entrepreneur and communications hubs, it's $200,000 as a first down payment on that $1.7 million. And the other activity that they are engaged in is a approximately $2.2 million that they will be getting over the next four years, and this is through the LA Community College District Partnership, and they're getting $100,000. So we are investing significant amounts of money into PUSD, and then on the El Monte thing, Trustee Selvage, they're going to, the El Monte Union High School District, Trustee Martin was, is going to be getting $2.2 million over the next four years, with $100,000 down payment on something called the Advanced Manufacturing Engineering Technology Link Learning Project, AMTEL. So I do think it's important to publicly acknowledge that, Trustee Thompson, and to indicate that we are working very closely with our feeder school districts to provide opportunities as well. So thank you for that.
One, one quick suggestion, since our next meeting happens to be a joint meeting with the Pasadena Unified School District, it'd be, I think, good and appropriate to have a little bit of a discussion as to the, these two respective projects and just get both sides having an understanding of it and being able to move forward together collaboratively.
Thank you. So we have three resolutions. I am not sure if the board has any questions, let's go with Resolution G, that says, adopt Resolution Number 534 to order by annual governing board election. Any questions on that? We got to all vote together.
We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
No, no, hold on, I'm trying to do all three together. So we can just vote. So do we have any question on that one? We know it's regular. So the other one is the adoption, adopt Resolution 535 in support of AB 176, Higher Education Data Collection. Any question on that resolution? Yes.
So I'm a little unclear what the Assembly Bill is attempting to do, and if I'm reading it right, I'm a little concerned, but maybe I'm not reading it right. So I thought maybe a brief explanation would help me.
Okay.
Okay, so which one was it?
176.
The Bonta Bill, disaggregation.
Right.
So that is behind Tab H. And basically, what the bill attempts to do is to disaggregate the various Asian-American, Pacific Islander groups within California, and to drill down, I think on the, in the second page in the back, the, if you go to the first, "Now therefore be it resolved, believes that greater data disaggregation is imperative for uncovering social, economic, and educational disparities within the greater Asian population, and be it further resolved that the state of California rethink its policies governing aggregation of data that can be utilized to improve the educational and job training access and success of Asian and Pacific Islander populations." So when you, and at the top of that page, it talks about the types of Asian population that we have, for example, 38.4% Laotian, 39.2% Cambodian, 37% Hmong, 51% Vietnamese. This is not necessarily a percentage of all populations, but it's an example of the different types. So you've got Hmongs, you've got Cambodians, you've got Vietnamese, you've got Koreans, you've got Chinese, you've got all different types, and we tend to lump them all together into the single definition of Asian, when in fact, there's certainly more to it than that. So that's what this is about. Cost-wise, to our district, if we were to engage in it, it depends upon what the legislation actually says, but it might be anywhere from, is I think it was 14 to $25,000 for additional programming costs to comply with the legislation. The legislation is being broadened, however, and actually, I should say limited in scope because of other impacts, so we'll actually see what happens, but for now, it's about support, and I think Trustee Wa has got some things.
So to also, to clarify this a little, Trustee Martin, it's, the federal government already requires that data be disaggregated for APIs for health and for housing, but it was never required to disaggregate it for education. This bill was actually originally proposed when Assembly Member Mike Ng was in, up in Sacramento, and it has been worked on for that amount of time, and now Assembly Member Bonta is moving it forward. So, so as Dr. Miller has discussed, you know, the APIs tend to get, it's a large, it's a large grouping, and so some of these subgroups who probably could use some additional resources are getting lumped in with major groups like the Chinese, the Japanese, and the Koreans, who are not maybe as affected. So one of the things we find in the Asian-American community, and we've discussed this under the API advisory here at PCC, and it was also discussed in Sacramento, is that we have groups like the, well, and here at PCC, 3% of our population are Filipino-Americans. We have roughly 27% are APIs, and a large, and thus demographics are changing over the years, so it's not just the Chinese and Japanese. We're getting a large movement in influx of Southeast Asians, Pacific Islanders, so, and we know that many times, they are tracking below even the Latinos and the African-Americans and getting no additional resources because they keep getting lumped in with the larger Asian-American groups. So this is a way for us to take a look at our populations and to determine if there is additional resources, if we should be doing something different. And when you even look at this, the Student Equity Plan that was presented last time, the group, the API group, was the largest gap population of the community that we serve versus those who actually come to the college. And it could be that they are going somewhere else, they're not, they're bypassing us because they're, maybe they're going straight into fourth year, but I also, and the API communities are hearing that there are other reasons, and we need to look at those reasons so that we can better serve our communities, and that's what this attempts to do.
I'm very supportive of this, because I, the Pacific Islanders are the most at risk today, and the Samoyan students finishing college, and they really are at the bottom and need as much help as they can get, so I'm very supportive of this. Thank you.
Well, here's my concern. My concern is a good concept going down, not working with the details up. And I'm concerned about that, because we heard previously that the, one of the largest growing groups is a, is a mixed race. And I, not with 30,000, but with 1,000 in smaller groups of the organization that I'm associated with, we've done surveys that say as high as 25% of our membership is actually mixed race. And here's my concern. My concern is, I know several families that are Vietnamese-Chinese, or Japanese-Chinese, or Korean and Cambodian, you know, example after example, which if the answer to the question is, are you API or not, or API or, the answer is yes, but if you, if one of the options is, are you mixed race, and, and the question is Vietnamese-Chinese, Japanese, Korean, da-da-da-da-da, mixed race, you're going to get an answer of mixed race. In some ways, I'm concerned that though the concept is a good concept to reach out to those who may need it, that in the practicality, it may actually be distorting the real data. Has anybody, I mean, don't we, and I'm looking back there to Crystal, who always faithfully tells, I don't know how these mixed race questions percolate up, but I'm, you know, mixed race works within API as it does across larger boundaries, and to me, that is the single largest growing population.
Dr. Corn is prepared to say a few words on this topic, if that would be helpful. President Brown.
Go ahead.
I'll be very brief. The mixed race is not actually a field that students select, it's a calculated field based on their selection of more than one category. So we would still have the ability to drill down in the, in the way that Trustee Wa is indicating, but when we categorize students in the broader categories that lump students together, then we would decide whether to put them in the API category or the mixed race category.
So my daughter's good friends, who are Vietnamese-Chinese.
Yes.
Would check both Vietnamese and Chinese.
Yes, and then they would be in the broader scale lumped together with the API category, but we would have the additional data to be able to identify that they marked both Vietnamese and Chinese.
Oh, well, that's a good detail up. If that's the way this Assembly Bill is going to work.
Yeah, and I think the thing that most intrigued me about this, and what I was most supportive, is that I didn't realize until I got into this, that in fact, there are a number of students that are underperforming and are not actually being served, because they are being lumped into the higher-performing Chinese and other populations. So that's another benefit to this.
Any other questions?
Okay, so, no more questions on this one. So let's go to the third one, and then we'll vote. Okay, Resolution 536 in support of AB 393 Hernandez, Veterans Resource Centers Grant Program. Okay, any discussion or question on that? Go ahead.
What does the bill actually provide for?
I can answer that. These, you know, these came from the legislative advocacy, these last two resolutions. It sets up a framework so that the chancellor's office can establish a program for funding veterans' centers, if the legislature provides the money, that they would set up, they would set up the criteria and do the allocation, and then if the money comes, they're ready to go. So it essentially is, it sets up the, the structure for funding veterans' centers. But there's no money, as of this time, connected with it.
And I think it's important, when Trustee Mann said Legislative Advocacy Committee, she meant the board's Legislative Advocacy Committee.
Yes, yes, the board's Legislative Advocacy Committee.
And that's Trustees Thompson, Mann, and Wa.
I just wanted the record to be clear as to what the bill provides.
Okay, so are we ready to vote? Okay, advisory vote?
Aye.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Thinking in motion through.
Oh, too fast, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Trustee Wu, and a second by who?
Mark, Mr. Lewis.
Oh, Trustee Lewis, okay. All right, so advisory vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carry, human, humanity, for all three resolutions. Okay, got it?
Trustee Brown, at the, at the last meeting, I pointed out that the board bylaws say that when an item is placed on the agenda, an action item, not only should it be in an art of an action, which it is, but it's supposed to say who had placed this on the agenda. So H and I would have said Board Legislative Advisory Committee, and I think that would have been helpful for the board to know that this had been reviewed by the committee before coming forward, whereas G would have said President. So I would like again for us to either follow our bylaws or change them so that we are in compliance, but that's the reason why it's there, because if, for example, the Audit Committee brings something, it would identify as having come from the Audit Committee, as rather than coming from the administration.
Trustee Mann, thank you very much. Mary and I actually scratched our heads to try to figure out exactly what you're saying, but this has been very clear, though, and now we, now we understand. So thank you very much.
Very good. But we'll get it right eventually.
We will eventually get it right.
They will, okay, very good. So now we're going to Item K, CalWorks Update.
I'll ask Dr. Levo to introduce the CalWorks staff and have them do a presentation. Thank you.
Great. Good evening, Board of Trustees and audience members. I have with me tonight the coordinator of the CalWorks program, who has been in place for the past two years. She's a general counselor that I hired four years ago, and when I hired her, it was very exciting, because she was a general counselor at Los Angeles City College, who also oversaw a grant-funded program. So I knew that she had the talent to oversee a grant program and to really identify students' needs and meet those needs through programs and services. And you'll hear from Helena Jarso tonight, what she has been able to lead in the CalWorks area. So Helena.
Good evening, trustee members. Again, my name's Helena Jarso, and I've been having the pleasure of overseeing the CalWorks program for the past two years, and in this time period, we've really done a lot to try to address the needs of the CalWorks students. And what I think you have in your board packet and what's on the screen here is actually our Year in Review newsletter from the 2013-2014 year, and that's what I wanted to review with you this evening. I also have a student of ours, Elizabeth Martinez with me, and she's also a work-study student from our program and works in our office. So the CalWorks program, if you're not familiar, is the California Work and Responsibility to Kids program, and that's basically the California's version of the federal welfare-to-work program. And our students are low-income parents with children under 18 who receive cash aid for themselves and their children, and in order to receive benefits from the county, the CalWorks students must participate in approved activities as part of their welfare-to-work program for a specific number of hours, and in which, in the case of our students, is PCC, Attending PCC for Educational Training. So as you can imagine, a lot of our students are facing ongoing challenges of juggling the responsibilities of parenting, school, financial hardship, employment, and in many cases, significant personal obstacles such as homelessness, domestic violence, mental health treatment, among other things, while trying to satisfy their requirements of the welfare-to-work program, as well as being successful students at PCC. So what we provide is advocacy for our students in their education and help them communicate and negotiate with their county workers who oversee their benefits. We provide jobs to students through our own work-study program, academic counseling, job skills, personal development, training and workshops, and other resources and referrals. We help students with documents that they're required to complete for the county to maintain good standing and get support while they're at PCC. But ultimately, we believe that our students have a great potential with the proper support and encouragement, that they can be successful and model perseverance for their children while achieving their educational goals and creating stable lives for themselves. So just to give you some fun facts that are here, we've had over 300 students participating in the PCC CalWorks program. This year is about the same, and that's been for about, for the last three years. There are over 450 children of students in the CalWorks programs who benefit from their parents' education. Last year, 26 CalWorks students graduated and/or transferred to Cal States and UC schools. 51 of our students participated in work-study, and this year, it's probably closer to 60 And so, moving on to the next page, what we've really been trying to do is to support the whole student. Of course, the academic component of our program is very strong with counseling, with interventions. We are proactive about ensuring students are following their educational plan, not just have an educational plan, but following their educational plan. We also are proactive about communicating with students who are on academic probation. But in addition to the academic support, we're really, as I said, trying to address the whole student. And as I mentioned, financial hardship, while it's difficult for all students, it is, it's very much a huge hardship for our students, and so And so we've been very proactive about giving them information and encouraging them and helping them through the process of applying for scholarships. And here you'll see featured five... Yeah, five of our students that received some sort of award or scholarship based on a recommendation from our program. One of them, Teresa Topete, who was awarded the Region Seven statewide CalWorks Scholarship, was able to fly up to Sacramento and be on a panel in front of CalWorks programs all over the state. We have two students that won $1,000 through the Women in Action organization. And at the bottom, one of our students won a $9,000 scholarship through Sir Optimist, local and international. And we're really excited because we did encourage our students and help them through that process this year. And we found out that last week that one of our students also won the local and international level at $5,000 for the scholarship for Sir Optimists. So we're very, very excited about that. And it's really helping our students see that it's possible, you know, that there is... That they make the effort, that there's really help out there for them. And it's really a form of encouragement. We've also spotlighted a student in here. He is... We don't have as many male students at all as we do female students, but he is a single father who's in our work-study program, who describes basically the encouragement and the impact that the program has had on him and his ability to be able to work in something that's related to his career. He's a television and radio major, and he is employed through our CalWorks-specific work-study program with Lancer Lens. And so it's been about a year now, and he's really grateful for that because it's allowing him to stay into something that's really helping him build his resume towards future We've had an end of the... Last year, we had an end-of-the-year recognition luncheon. We featured a student who is the director of, basically, Human Resources for the Hallmark Channels, who is a former CalWorks recipient. She was very inspirational to our students, to be able to see that, you know, you can become someone who is very successful despite what obstacles you might be facing at this point in time. And so we featured some of the advice that she gave during that presentation or that speaking engagement that she had with us, so that other students could be able to see that who didn't attend our luncheon. And I have here, I mentioned 26 of our students graduated or transferred. We've got a list of those students here as well. This year, we'll be celebrating students, hopefully, more. And so that will be happening on April 24th, and we'll be having a speaker who is the creator of Be Your Own Brand, which is a company that assists people... Or she's actually worked with celebrities in branding themselves. And she's going to bring that message to our students in terms of them branding themselves personally and professionally. And so I think that's going to be a great opportunity for our students to hear something that's inspirational to them as well and that they can apply to their lives. We have a student spotlight... A graduate spotlight of a student of ours, who actually ended up graduating from here and working for the county, now helping students the same way that she was helped while she was in our program. And then one of the things that we've done is survey our students to see how we can really help them outside of just... Basically, as I mentioned, the whole student. So what are the things that they need in order to balance their life outside of school? Because, again, those are some of the obstacles that can hinder their success the most. And so from that, we've developed workshops and collaborations with organizations in the community, and some of those are listed here: City of Pasadena Public Health, the California Employment Development, Schools First Credit Union, Western Center on Long Poverty and Women at Work, nonprofit organization. And it shows some of the workshops and trainings that we've done for students, including healthy meal planning, communicating with skill intact in the business environment. We've done, for the last two years, something called the Stress Less Series. And each of the workshops addresses something such as parenting, single or co-parenting strategies, or balancing family and work and school. So things that will hopefully help students identify ways to de-stress themselves or at least learn how to cope with stress so that they can be more successful in school. And you can take a look at the other workshops on here. This year, we have implemented a little more parenting. We had a workshop on how to get your kids to do what you want them to do, which we all want to know.
Yeah.
So... But these types of skills are very important to our students. To be able to learn how to be effective parents helps them also become less stressed and focus on school more. And so from, you know, feedback that we've gotten, students have really appreciated this. And in particular, one of the collaborations here with Schools First Credit Union, we've had a lot of students show up to workshops related to money management or building and repairing their credit, so that hopefully, when they're finishing school, that they will be financial... They will know how to manage themselves financially to have, you know, more opportunities to do things with themselves in the future. So with that said, I wanted to give Elizabeth an opportunity. She wanted to share some words, and she's really a wonderful student and a wonderful employee, so I'm very happy to have her speak to you guys.
My name is Elizabeth Martinez. I'm a student here at PCC. I'm getting my AA in Communications dismay and transferring to Cal State LA to get my bachelor's in Communications and then finally my master's. I have a daughter who is almost two years old, and let me just say, it's not easy balancing school and family life. But the CalWorks program has been extremely helpful in making it possible and making it a good experience. The type of support I get from the CalWorks office is so many different levels. It's hard to put into words sometimes, starting with, like she was mentioning, the workshops. The last workshop I went to just last week was the Strengths Quest. It was a half-day workshop where we got to understand and learn how to use our top five strengths. So we did a survey, and we found out... Everyone found out their own top five strengths, and we broke it down to where we knew exactly how to use that in our academic life, personal life, and career-wise. So that was really helpful. It's also, on a personal level, it's... I feel like the CalWorks office is like our safe zone. It's like our backup here at PCC, where we can feel comfortable and safe, where we can go and talk to everyone at the CalWorks office, and they support us in whatever the situation may be. Also, we have, like you said, we have to deal with many difficult situations outside of school, and sometimes it's nice to feel that there are people who want us to succeed and to do better for ourselves, not only in school, but in our personal lives overall. As ironic as it sounds, I think I'm a better student now that I had my daughter than before when school was my only priority. And a lot of that has to do with the CalWorks program, because we have our own counselor where we can make our goals, and she's available, consistent, and we can keep up with the academic goals and stay on topic and stay dedicated to what we're supposed to be doing. And also, we have a lot of help with our county workers. So there's a lot of paperwork, deadlines, a lot of things that we have to try to keep up with, with our county worker, and through the CalWorks office, we can do that and stay on top of it. And it's like, it's a relationship where we can not be on our own. It's very helpful to do that together. Being that I am a work-study student at the CalWorks office, I feel like I can speak for all the CalWorks students, because a lot of the CalWorks students trust even in me and tell me the same things. They're so grateful for the CalWorks office and everything that they can help us with and everything they do for us, not only... Not only in, like, not only for school, but just the support. It's really nice to have when sometimes a lot of our students don't feel like we have that, you know? It's hard to... It's hard to put into words. It's more than just the schooling and the system. It's more like a personal relationship with the CalWorks office. And I also have to say, I think Helena is an amazing coordinator, not only as my boss, as a work-study student, but honestly, everyone that comes in says she has done an amazing job. Everyone that works there, everyone... She's just does a really good job at making everything the best it could be. Even our people from the workshops that come always say she's done an amazing job planning it. So it's a really good program for all of us. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions, trustees? So we want to thank you. Very informative. Thanks.
And I'll just add quickly that, as Elizabeth said, Helena has done an amazing job. And I think you're soon to be leaving us for a short period of time. Are you expecting, I think?
Yes, I am.
So you make sure you come back and really come back. And again, as the interim director, you've done a coordinator, you've done an extraordinary job, and it's appreciated. And there are 300 students who you make a difference in their lives every day. And this, I think the CalWorks program just represents another one of the amazing programs we have on campus to deal with the wide array of students and student needs that we have. And thank you very, very much from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you.
You bet.
Great. So now we'll have our accreditation update.
Yes. I'll ask Dr. Scott to come forward and also our...
Is this item L?
Item L, yes.
Yes, I have a card on this one.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Melissa Michelson.
Okay. I'll be reading this on behalf of Professor Michelson. It reads, Dear Board of Trustees, I have noticed in the packet the list of possible accreditation recommendations and associate AIPs. Several senators have expressed concern that it may be too soon to start making recommendations when accreditation result has not been given to PCC yet. I have brought up the issue in my capacity on the Planning and Priorities Committee as well as Academic Center. I am aware of the list. I'm aware the list says these are possible recommendations, and this is probably the direction PCC needs to go. But until we have a more direct matrix to each of the standards, the comments from the ACCJC in July, and the list of our own academic improvement plans, the AIPs, I hope we don't move... I hope we don't immediately start moving forward on these recommendations so as to not put the cart before the horse. It's good food for thought. Nevertheless, thank you, Melissa Michelson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So since when do we allow...
So the accreditation update will be Dr. Scott and Stephanie, our self-evaluation coordinator.
And in your red packets, we have the PowerPoint that they're going to be sharing tonight.
They have the two documents that are the backup documents, and the slides are new.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Oh, you did? Oh, sorry. All right. Good evening, Board of Trustees and public, members of the public. Today, we would like to do a short accreditation update, as we will be doing regularly. First of all, I'd like to start with by telling everybody that the visiting team's 60-page report was sent to us late last night, and we've gone over it and read it relatively carefully, but it is a long report and will continue to be doing so. I'd like to read two paragraphs from the email that was sent from the team chair to President Miller. The ACCJC has a policy of transmitting a draft of the external evaluation report to the CEO of the visited institution before the final report is sent to the commission. The college is thereby given an opportunity to review the report for correction of possible errors of fact. A copy of the draft report is also sent to the ACCJC president. The report should be considered confidential to the college and should not be given general distribution outside your immediate leadership team. So we will be adhering to that email and that directive. I do want to say, though, that everything we were told verbally in the exit report is in the written report. And I cannot emphasize enough the need for us to take the recommendations very seriously and to start working on addressing them immediately. This is a crucial thing for this college, and they will be back in a short period of time, a few months, and we need to demonstrate that we've made some progress. We're also intending to go up to ACCJC's annual meeting in June, early June, and we would like to be able to tell them that we have made some progress thus far. So tonight, we'll be talking about what we're doing in that regard, and Stephanie will start by just reviewing the recommendations briefly.
As we've told you several times, we've been taking steps to address those areas or those gaps, those areas of improvement, that not only the visiting team noted to us, but also that we self-identified in our self-evaluation. And so what I wanted to start with a little bit tonight was explaining to you how we're moving forward on those possible recommendations. And as we know that they're possible recommendations, they clearly align to the AIPs or the self-identified recommendations that we gave ourselves in our self-evaluation report. And so the first step that we've been working on is we've taken those possible recommendations that the site team gave to us, and then what we've done is we have aligned those to the common AIPs that we self-identified, so that we make sure that not only we're addressing those possible recommendations and what will become our recommendations eventually, but that we're aligning those and that the work that we're doing also accomplishes the dual goal of addressing our self-identified AIPs. And so on this first slide, it shows you this first possible recommendation that talks specifically about using transparent and participative processes, evaluating these processes, ensuring that all policies have input from all groups on campus, and that we all work together for the good of the institution. And you can clearly see that we've already discussed many of these issues in our self-evaluation. And these were identified in several AIPs, where we talked about evaluating our standing committees, where we talked about the need for offering training on shared or participatory governance, that we revised our governance handbook, and that we had training and role clarification, and that we continued not only training on participatory or shared governance, but also specifically on Brown Act training. Moving on to the possible recommendation number two, this is specifically where we talk... The team talks about our need to evaluate each of the components of our governance and decision-making structures. And this is an extenuation of a recommendation that we had received in 2009. And again, we identified the need for this in several AIPs in our self-evaluation report, where it clearly shows the need for us to model governance and evaluate all of our Recommendation or possible recommendation number three talks about our need to follow our policies that address our codes of ethics, and this was also identified in an AIP. Possible recommendation number four talks about how learning outcomes and needs to be incorporated into our evaluation. This one isn't necessarily linked to an AIP, and it's a little more complex because we need to bring all of the bargaining groups together to address this. And so that's what we're doing on our next steps to address this particular issue. Possible recommendation number five, that the site visit team talked about, was the need for the Comprehensive and Coordinated Professional Development Program. And we identified these... This need in two areas of our self-evaluation report as well. And possible recommendation number six talked about our need to improve and evaluate our planning processes, and we have multiple AIPs in our self-evaluation that note that same thing, that are related to our overall planning cycle as well as the evaluation of it and the development of our technology master plan. And finally, the possible recommendation number seven, which talks about our need to integrate program review into our planning cycle so that we have a more clear relationship between program review, planning, and resource allocation. And as you can see, we were all over this one. We noted that we needed to do this in multiple places in the self-evaluation. So our next steps are to make sure that, as we move forward, that we are addressing not only those possible recommendations, which will become our recommendations, but also our actionable improvement plans. And Dr. Scott is going to talk a little bit more about those next steps.
The Planning and Priorities Committee met on March 16th and made a recommendation to college council, that college council be the committee that oversees the accreditation effort. They felt this way because it's chaired by the president, it gives it the importance it needs, it has many people on it representing the various constituency groups, it's well-attended, and we felt that would be the best place. They agreed, and they will be overseeing the effort. We also discussed identifying groups or existing committees with responsibility for the recommendations, and also the need to form ad hoc groups if we don't have existing committees to deal with certain areas of the recommendations. Once established, each group would... The plan was for them to meet prior to April 15th and to prioritize the work in their area as best they can, create a plan with steps, timelines, and assigned tasks, again, as best they can before people leave for the summer, report back to college council on April 23rd regarding any progress made, and generate and provide evidence of all steps to the Office of the ALO. During that college council meeting, people felt so... Felt that this was so serious that there was discussion about this committee meeting over the summer. And I do believe that that's going to happen. People recognize the need to get started on this work immediately, and in my opinion, it would be very helpful for this committee to meet, and I believe that they will. Okay. Thanks. All right. The proposed groups and committees for recommendations one through three, they all deal with some form of governance. And on April 7th, we will be having a meeting from 3 o'clock. from 3:00 to 5:00. I've invited the leaders of the Academic Senate, the Classified Senate, Associated Students, Dr. Mann has agreed to attend, and members of the executive team, and we will start looking at the governance recommendations. We may decide to break that into a couple or three different groups, different subcommittees, but we will determine that when that group meets and we start discussing it. We will also put together a group led by the Director of HR to look at the evaluations and to make sure that SLOs are in there for all groups, and that will include members of the bargaining units, and we'll be looking at evaluations generally in that, during that, that time. The next one is the professional development. Since we already have a standing group, it's a governance group for that, we will look to that committee to provide the leadership. They've already met numerous times, they've got a draft of Policy 6030 that's going through the various constituency groups, the Academic Senate approved it, and we're waiting to, for a word from the MA and the Classified Senate, and it'll be going back to College Council at their next meeting. And for six and seven, those are about planning. Ryan sent an email, Dr. Corner sent an email earlier today to various groups, members of IEC, P&amp;P, BRAC, and the constituency leadership, to put together a group that will deal with the planning areas. It's a little bit more difficult because he's got to get names from people, but I would urge the various groups to put those names forward as quickly as possible so that we can meet before the end of the semester and, like with governance, governance gets started right away. The two areas that are most critical are governance and planning, because these had been recommendations from 2009. We know that they are an issue, and, and we need to address them quickly. I'd also like to say that we do have Brown Act training scheduled for April 21st, two sessions, one from 11:00 to 1:00, and one from 3:00 to 5:00. Thank you, Dr. Corner, for setting that up.
That's it?
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Yes, could you elaborate a little bit on item number four? The evaluation materials need to be revised for those with responsibility, learning, et cetera.
Yeah, what it is, is that anybody at the college who has responsibility for student learning outcomes or student service outcomes, whatever terminology is used, they need to have that responsibility in their evaluation. It needs to be part of the evaluation documents. So, they asked for copies of the manager's evaluation, classified, and faculty, part-time and full-time, and that's where that recommendation came from. It needs to be in there. Everyone from the president down needs to be responsible for making sure that student learning outcomes are done.
Okay, and because that's an evaluation for people in a represented group?
Correct.
That needs to go through that, okay.
Correct. And it's an HR function.
Yeah, the term of art is it's a working condition that has to be discussed.
Yeah, I just want to thank you for all of the work you've done. I see that Dr. Miller still hasn't provided a cake for you yet, but, you know, I, I want to appreciate how much.
I did provide flowers, but I'm.
Oh, okay. I, I do think it's important that we move quickly to address these issues, and we start, I think we, as you had identified, there were already AIPs identified, you know, these had already been talked out, but it's important, I think, that we show, that we recognize that there are problems, that we not act like we're ostriches with our heads in the sand and think that everything was hunky-dory until the, the team came. And so, we, I think it's important to show that we are actively taking steps to make improvements, and so, I think, I applaud you guys for that, and I'm generally a person who likes to wait for discussion and get consensus, but I don't think that this is one of those things that we can do.
Very good. Any other questions? No one else? Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you, and thank you for your comment. I appreciate that very much.
All right, so now, we'll turn to our superintendent president report.
Very good. I want to start with some good news that we actually got today. I want to thank Dr. Ariano and her team. We had at least 25 of the first 50 or so courses approved in our new non-credit, with our new non-credit offerings, and what's really exciting about these is that these will all be tied to certificates that will be approved the next month, and will all be reimbursed at the higher rate of credit. So, in other words, the funding that we get for this will equal that which we get for our credit FTEs, and this also is very supportive of workforce education goals of the state now, and certainly of the task force and what have you, so we're making really good progress there, and I could bore you with all of these courses, but just know that they're all workforce-oriented. So, thank you, Dr. Ariano and team. Also, we were the recipients of a very nice gift from the San Marino Rotary of $15,000, plus another $10,000 in personal checks in support of the Veterans Health Center effort that we are all engaged in right now. Trustee Wa and Dr. Levo and, and Trustee Lewis and I were over, were at the Rotary last Wednesday, I think it was, and we did that.
Top of the list.
No, it actually has a name written right here.
You always forget my name.
Right there. But in any event, we did that, and that was great. I also want to just mention briefly that we had the, mathematics people had the pie event last week, and that went very, very well, and it wasn't pie to eat, it's the math pie, and that was very cool. The, there is also the Chinese Flower Tales of 1,000 Years at the LA County Arboretum that our president's Asian-American Advisory, Asian-American Pacific Under Advisory Committee were very involved in, thanks to Vivian Chan, and that was really cool, and what was even more exciting about that is on campus tomorrow at 9:00, that same group from China is going to come in and do, do similar parts of the presentation in Stan Kang's class over in the Center for the Arts, and there's a number of people who'll be involved in that, and that segues into the Chinese Culture Club Day events that will occur tomorrow at noon. So, there's just a lot going on of all good things. And finally, I just wanted to mention, Dr. Bell, Dr. Scott, and I had an opportunity to participate and observe at the University, University of California at Irvine, UCI, the Honors Transfer Council of California 15th Annual Honors Research Conference for California Community Colleges. That brought together 31 California community colleges, 375 students, and for the first time, our honors program participated. And this program, as I think many of you know, is led by Dr. Derek Milne, and I'm going to ask him to come and present where the honors program is these days, but also talk about this event, supported by a great English faculty, Dr. Robert Obentile, the amazing Shane Underwood, and certainly, from social sciences, equally fantastic, Dr. Robert Randall. If you saw our 25 to 30 kids in action, you would be awed and amazed. PCC is a wonderful place. We have students who are off the charts, ready for challenges, which is what the honors program is all about, and these young folks were incredible. I sat through about four or five of their presentations, I understood about 15% about what they were talking about, it was literally that level, and that doesn't, that doesn't say anything about me, it just, it was just really incredible stuff, and these students were great. And what was really good about the whole thing is that they are from all areas of our district, from every rainbow of the ethnicities, if you will, and they truly are a future, and the future is very bright. So, we'll have more about that at a future board meeting, but I just wanted you to be aware of that great event. So, that ends my report.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Now, we will turn to announcements by shared governance representative, and we will begin with President Caro.
Thank you very much. Let me begin by going back a bit to Resolution H, and it's just my opinion, on page two, the first resolve, it reads, "Be it further resolved at the Pasadena Area Community College District calls on California to rethink." Now, California is a non-living entity, so I think maybe perhaps what it was meant was calls on California members of California State Senate and California State Assembly. So, I'm of the opinion that there should be, now that, even though it's passed, you should change that to, to read California members, et cetera, instead of California being a non-living entity. You cannot call on California to rethink its policies. All right, in terms of the Senate work, the Senate this past week, they passed the resolution, which I'm about to read. It goes, it reads as follows, "Whereas the Board of Trustees of Pasadena City College has established policies and procedures to assure open and fair treatment of all employees and to set standards for behavior and activities on the campus. Whereas under BP Policy 3430, prohibition of harassment, all forms of harassment are prohibited, and a procedure for investigation of claims of harassment is outlined and penalties described. Whereas confidentiality is required in such a case as the allegations may be determined to be unfounded and the case dismissed. Whereas all involved parties are to be assured of anonymity until a case is thoroughly investigated in order to protect the reputations of all involved. Whereas AP Procedures 3430, prohibition of harassment provides clear guidelines specifically under confidentiality. The confidentiality of the person who files a sexual harassment complaint and of the person against whom a complaint is filed will be maintained to the fullest extent possible, consistent with the need to conduct a reasonable, objective, and thorough investigation, and consistent with the applicable law is not being followed. Whereas in a recent case, such confidentiality was breached by a highly-placed official at the college in complete violation of college policy. Be it resolved that the Academic Senate calls for the Board to heed and conform to its own policy, BP Policy 3430, prohibition of harassment and confidentiality will be respected as described under AP Procedures 3430." That resolution was just passed recently. And finally, I'd just like to make a comment regarding the Board's decision to not abide by shared governance. The Shared Governance Committee approved to have a winter part of the calendar, but the decision to go against the recommendation from the faculty's point of view takes us back to the Dr. Rocha years. We are trying to work together. We believed that you wanted to work in conjunction with us, but the fact that the process occurs and you still did not accept the recommendation is a slap in the face to all shared governance committees. A while back, we were asked to participate in the process of increasing the FTEs for this college, faculty, staff, management, and we all did, and the result is that the FTEs did increase. Going back a couple of months, back to late fall, up to that moment, winter was coming back. That is, until the state changed its method of calculating, and as a result of that, suddenly the need to bring back winter was simply discarded. And as a result, the Board decided not to vote for winter. It's a shame. It's a shame that we believe that there was progress being made, but unfortunately, we've taken several steps back. We are in the process of writing our own documentation of this regression of shared governance and sending to the ACCJC, because we are deeply saddened that the Board Trustees is not willing to respect shared governance, or at least cherry-pick what is convenient to them at the time. If we are to work together, we should respect shared governance at all times. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Are you suggesting that every time you come with a recommendation, we have to accept it?
No, sir. What I am suggesting is that there should always be a discussion as to why, as to the merits of our recommendation. At the moment, the only thing that's happening is that we provide a recommendation, College Council, for example, to Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller has provided his recommendation, and then there was no discussion. I mean, something of this nature, highly important to so many people, the students voted for it, faculty voted for it, the College Council voted for it, but with so many different constituents, it was, the least we could have done is, a discussion should have been occurred to allow everyone to provide the merits, which did not occur. So, it's not that I believe that every single time, but if a discussion is heard, we can know each other's position in a respectful manner, and not simply say yes or no.
Do I recall correctly that you were not present at the last meeting?
That is correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so then next, we have Management Association, Dr. Douglas.
Thank you, President Brown. I just want to thank Trustee Selvage for being present for Pi Day. We appreciated having you there and, and listening through the high-level talks that were given to some of the math students. And I just have a couple, save the dates. One, Management Association Retirement Breakfast is Tuesday, May 5th, 8:00 to 10:00, and I believe it's going to be at Brookside again, and we'd love to have as many of you available as possible to come. And the second is the, to invite you to the first-ever Science Village Weenie Roast hosted by the Natural Sciences Area and the Social Activities Group, and that's going to be on Earth Day, April 22nd, in Science Village, from about 11:00 to 1:00. You should get a formal invitation as soon as Grace gets it finished, so.
Thank you. Okay, and now, we'll move on to Classified Senate, Ms. Graciela Caringella.
Good evening, trustees. On behalf of the Classified Senate, we'd like to let you know, we had a very successful town hall meeting last week on Thursday. We were able to meet with a lot of classified staff across campus, and as it was our first town hall meeting, we were able to not only hear their concerns, their comments, but we were also able to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves as the Senate, what our role is on campus, and exactly what we do and how we're there to serve them. We did follow up with a survey to all classified staff, requesting future topics that they would like to see, or any ideas or suggestions. That way, we make sure that we are able to extend the invitation to the staff that was not able to be present. We also had sent out a call for self-nominations to serve on the Senate, and we were very excited because we received six self-nominations, so we're definitely excited to begin that process, to have future classified staff serve as senators alongside us. As an update to our Classified Senate scholarship process, we are currently reading those applications, so we're hoping to be able to identify a recipient very soon. And then, lastly, I wanted to let you know that we're putting together and finalizing a Classified Senate newsletter, which will keep the classified staff and also the campus up to date as what classified staff is doing and any events. When it's final, I'll make sure that all of you guys get a copy of it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, about Trustee, Trustee Lewis, do you have a report?
No reports.
Trustee Selvage?
Yes, one thing that I learned at the conclusion of Pi Day from some, a couple of the faculty members, and this is for the benefit of everybody here, the crowd is dwindling, but it's billiards out, there must be thousands of people out there watching us on TV right now. We had a math student that went through PCC here, transferred to UCLA as a junior, and while at UCLA as a junior, this student was contacted by Caltech, and Caltech said, "We'd like you to come over to Caltech, finish up your four years at Caltech, you'll get your Caltech degree, and we'll enroll you in our PhD program in math and all kinds of full-rides, scholarships, stipends, and everything else." I mean, I mean, that's really hitting it out of the park, so, got a, got a great math department here. And also, Professor Douglas, I want to make sure that was the 22nd from 11:00 to 1:00. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Thompson?
I just want to make one observation, that in the minutes from the last board meeting, with respect to the adoption of the 2015-16 calendar, there was public comment from Chris Bylin, and she was here representing the Academic Senate at that meeting.
Thank you. Is that it? Okay, over here, Trustee Wa.
Okay, my 15 minutes?
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Just kidding. Okay, couple, save the date. So, April 18th is the CSBA California School Boards Association LACSTA Joint Event, which will be held at East LA College, and Chancellor Rodriguez will be moderating the event, and will be talking about cradle-to-career pathways, so I hope you will all attend. May 1st is also the, the Annual Trustees Conference up in Monterey, and so, for those of you who are planning on attending, Dr. Sunny Cook and I will be presenting on the Workforce Development Task Force, and also, Trustee Lewis has agreed to help address the issues of the veterans with the API Caucus, so thank you, Trustee Lewis. You know, I wanted to also just mention today, I was listening to KPCC, and it's the 30th year anniversary of Larry Mantle's Air Talk, and he talked about how he started at the basement here at PCC, and he worked for a general manager, and when he presented the idea of the Air Talk, which was kind of unheard of, was bringing regular people, common people, not big-name speakers, into talk about current issues, this general manager gave him a chance, and of course, as we know, Air Talk is wildly successful, and that general manager was Dr. Robert Miller, so I wanted to thank you, and he certainly thanked you on that. And then, many of you also received the invitation from Dr. Chang on the culture activity tomorrow, and so, I think Dr. Selvage is going to go, but I hope all of you will go. and so I think Dr. Salvage is going to go, but I hope all of you will go.
Okay, Dr. Miller? Well, I was just going to say that yesterday, the Board had its campus chats, which were extremely well-attended. We had been, it had been suggested to us, don't be disappointed if nobody shows up. And there was a lot of people in the first session. In the afternoon, more chairs, more chairs, more chairs, and people are actually standing. I thought they were very informative, very productive, and we do have more scheduled, right? And at the time, a question arose, which I mentioned that we were planning on having strategic chats, because the question was, why isn't the Board, aren't we discussing this? But it wasn't really things we could discuss, where we could discuss a general idea, and that was very, very well-received. And so actually, Ryan actually said, why, should we try to schedule one in the spring or in the summer? But people seemed to think that would be a great idea to have in the fall. Thank you, Dr. Mann. Dr. Bell?
Just want to thank the Governor for calling for a 25% cut in water usage today. We are at the lowest in the history of the state, and next year we will have no water if it doesn't rain. Thank you.
That's a great report.
Wait, did he say no water?
We'll be waterless. Justie Martin? Okay, great. Yeah, I have to echo what trustee Mann said about our coffee chat. I thought it was, it went very well, and I am encouraged because I think this will be, it is, a beginning of us talking and hearing, and not only hearing, but hopefully acting eventually. So we are, we're excited about this. This is a good start. So we are now going to see if anyone has any, no, we're going to do the proposed future board meetings. We have a board meeting scheduled with PUSD on April 16th at 6:00 PM. Then on Wednesday, May 6th is our regular business meeting, and Wednesday, the 20th, will be our following business meeting.
And may I just, a quick correction on the April 16th, there will be a joint meeting with Pasadena Unified School District Board, but we're going to be here in Creveling. We were able to secure this space, so it'll be here. And trustee Brown and I are working on a short but meaty agenda for both boards to discuss.
Absolutely, yes. Well, that's good to know we will be right here. Okay, do we have anyone that would like to have any agenda items for the future? Go ahead, trustee Wa.
Although the Small Business Development Report and Plan is on the future agenda items, there is no date, and so I would like to see if there's, I know that staff's been working on one, so if we could maybe find out when we'll have an actual plan.
Yeah, you'll have it at the May 6 meeting. We've actually been pushing it for the last two or three meetings because of other items on the agenda, but we'll have it on May 6.
Okay, any other? Yeah, trustee Brown, and another capacity. I happened to get ahold of the budget presentation for LAUSD, it's a public document, and was stunned to see how the number of students in the district is declining, so that in one year, they lost as many students as are total in the San Francisco Unified School District. And I would like for us, in the future sometime, to look at this, because I think it has a major implication for us, particularly in planning for facilities use. I mean, I know we know that there's a decline in enrollment in PUSD, but we keep saying, well, these are people going to private schools, but, you know, that many students are not suddenly going to private schools. And one of the things I would like to do is, I'd like to share that, and maybe we could get some kind of a breakout on the level of these students and what it might mean for us. So I'd like, I think that's something we need to discuss and look at, become more aware of. Great. Any other? No other items? Okay, great. So it seems like we are now adjourned. Thank you.